Good evening, Chair. Calls the order of public hearing for Bill 24-012, Sheriff's Office Pension Plan Amendments 2024. Tonight, we have Mr. Sanlis with us. And I'm sorry, sir, I can't remember your name from Miles.
You get a raise for that.
Mr. Passakolen.
Thank you, sir. So whenever you're ready.
Bringing forth two changes to the Harford County Sheriff's Office Pension Plan that covers our correctional officers. You know, most of the county employees are under the state's plan, either the state's traditional plan or the LEOPS plan, but our correctional officers are under the county's own Sheriff's Office Pension Plan. So the changes here that are being proposed were both requested by the Harford County Correctional Association earlier this year. Members of the Correctional Association are here in attendance with us. And they covered two areas. One was to increase the drop, which is the Deferred Retirement Optional Plan, from five years to seven years. And just kind of a quick synopsis on what a drop is, is once you reach 25 years of service, you effectively, from the pension system, you more or less retire, and your pension benefit is frozen at that level. But you're allowed to continue working as a correctional officer, and the proceeds of that pension, along with your 9% contribution, are kept in the pension trust where they earn interest at 3.5%. And then, once you do officially separate from county service, you would receive that as a lump sum payment, which case you can roll over or put into other investments. So it's a great way sometimes to keep individuals retained, you know, some of our most experienced correctional officers, in order to keep them for a few more years before they officially separate. Again, a few years ago, we added the provision to have this for the first time with a cap of five years, and now this will just extend that, for those who so choose, up to seven. Right now, there's only about five individuals that are in the drop, so it's hard to say how many would take full advantage of the seven years. Probably not too many, but again, it will be an option for them. The other is probably a little more significant change, and that is a transfer of service time. Right now, the SOPP is a closed system, meaning that you have to earn all of your credible service years employed within Harford County. What this provision would allow is for up to five years of service to be transferred in from another qualified pension. Now, it must be a law enforcement or correctional pension, so if I had a change of career, I couldn't take my current years of service towards this. But if you're coming, say, from another county, Cecil County, or Baltimore County, or perhaps, you know, municipal police force, you would, you know, be able to transfer up to five years of service time, which will help us with lateral movements and recruiting those individuals that have already gone through training and that are a little bit more experienced. Both of these changes, I think, should have negligible cost to the overall trust. Right now, the trust is 81% funded, so it's in very good shape. We think that the drop provision might possibly cost around $25,000 a year total, but again, it's hard to say until we actually figure out who applies for it and, you know, and how the investments and all do. And then, the transfer of service time will vary according to what individuals would opt to transfer into county service, you know, how old are they, how many years of experience. But we think it's probably about between $5,000 and $15,000 per year of credible service time. Now, I should say, with the transfer of service, those individuals will have to, in essence, buy their service time. Many of them will have enough funds through their contributions that they made to another pension system, but in the event that there's a gap, they would have to make up that difference, you know, either by rolling over other retirement funds or striking a check. You know, we would also be able to work with them when it comes to, like, a payroll deduction. So those are the changes. Both of these changes would take effect January 1 of 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Sanlis. Would you like to add anything?
Let me just add that both of these changes are standard, and there are other counties in Maryland who have the drop program and the service credit purchasing.
Thank you.
And I should also add that this, both of these changes were approved by the trustees of the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan as well.
Thank you. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Luke Huesman and Brian Carter from the Association that are here with us, Correctional Association. And I just want to just kind of put on the record, I mean, recruitment is retention is difficult in corrections, and I think this is going to be an incentive for them. So I appreciate the administration taking this on. I know that seven-year drop is kind of the trend going. I know the state also did it for LEOPS as well, so we're just following suit. So I appreciate your efforts. So thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Bennett?
I apologize for my ignorance, but I didn't even realize that our corrections officers weren't in the same pension as our deputies. Could you just explain the nuances of that and the history of that?
I think, you know, years ago, the deputies were under the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan, and then the decision was made to move them to the state's LEOPS plan. And each pension has, you know, different multipliers and different factors. The state does run a correctional officer's pension, but again, you know, I think we've been able to administer our own pension here with, that's a competitive pension and very similar, and I think we're able to do it fairly efficiently and the like. And so far, there hasn't been any desire, I think, to, for the correctional officers to seek other options. Now, several years ago, we did substantially increase the benefits of this pension. So about two or three years ago, you know, we made some significant changes here and made it a much more competitive pension.
Is it a cost savings to keep it under the county umbrella versus the state umbrella? Or what's the...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's no doubt. We're certainly going to have more control and be able to control our expenses. We have a very lean operation, I would say, when it comes to this pension plan. We really don't have anyone who is fully dedicated to running this pension. Of course, you know, if you're at the part of the state system, you know, it's a huge bureaucracy there that is able to administer all of their pension. So, yeah, I do think we're able to do it in a more efficient way, but, you know, as a trustee of the state pension, I'm also not going to knock the state pension system either. It's also very efficient.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Anything else you want to add? If not, then this will conclude this public hearing, and we will, for Bill 24-12012, and we'll take it up at a future meeting. Thank you, you guys. This, Mr. Bowling, Mr. Walsh, Ms. Austin from the Health Department, Mr. Resline as well, my friend. Mr. Truitt, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Council President Vincenti, and you stole some of my thunder with introductions already, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for taking care of that. Pleasure being before this council again this evening for Bill 2413 to present for fee schedule update. As Council President already did, we had some introductions. Unfortunately, I don't see Director Kuba in the audience, but Director Kuba was also part of this team. So it would be remiss if I did not present at first thing is, the last time Chapter 157 was comprehensively looked at was Bill 2015, so in year 2000. It was part of my initiation of being a supervisor here, you know, glad to be promoted. Here, go take care of this. And one of the things that happened back then is we didn't really have a good methodology, especially when the fees that DILP was looking at, so we kind of just took a stab at it. So that was one of our things this year, when Mr. Bowling and I started to look at this process, that we wanted to come up with a methodology, be able to explain how we came up with the fees that we're proposing this evening, and also make sure that they were in line with services that are provided. So the bill before you has incorporated fees from DILP, Department of Public Works, Health Department, and ICT. And all of our agencies basically utilize the same kind of concepts that I'm going to go over. First off, we compared comparable existing county fees and new proposed fees to those with central Maryland counties, Anarondle, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Carroll, Cecil, Frederick, and Howard. We looked at adjustments that were intended to offset our budget shortfalls. One of our guiding principles, and when Mr. Bowling and I looked at it for DILP fees, we wanted to establish a target, and you're going to see that very soon in our presentation. And then, reaching that target, what would it take? So by doing so, we reduced general fund, use of general funds, and we're utilizing services for the department. Those individuals that are utilizing our services are actually paying for our services. So we tried to also evaluate and minimize adverse effects on the increases. So obviously, the more we're going to charge for our services, sometimes people don't want to apply for permits. So we kept that in mind as well. So we wanted to make sure that we were conscious of that fact. Included in the cost was continued development and employment of our EnerGov system, which has been very effective for not only creating efficiencies within departments, but also enhancing customer service by leveraging that technology. In the last year alone, we added additional licenses for the Health Department and Harford County Sheriff's Office to be able to implement and provide new functionality. And also, consideration was given to Consumer Price Index since 2000. For ICT in 157-19, proposal was really intended to recoup the costs of the H-Man utility marking requests. ICT gets about 2,500 requests a year, and right now, there's no mechanism for recouping those costs, so that cost would offset that expenditure. So why do we, what are the departmental increases? So over the years, you know, obviously, rising costs of goods and services that the department is consuming in order to provide our services to the public has risen. You're going to see that in the DILP budget that I'm going to show you shortly. Our staffing salaries, making sure that we have competitive wages and benefits in order to attract qualified staff. Fuel and maintenance costs for our vehicles. Staff training and education is becoming more and more important and also more expensive. Technology costs for our software and hardware, and again, leveraging that technology comes with additional licensing costs. Initial, not only the initial costs, but yearly maintenance costs in order to provide those licenses or services. In our proposal, we are proffering that these fees would, if passed by this body, would become effective January 1, 2025. Reasons, so we worked with Treasury. It was kind of a good estimate for them to be able to say, yeah, what we're proposing would be about a half year of revenue for FY25 budget. In addition, we had to work with our ICT team. A lot of the fees that DILP is proposing, if passed, will greatly restructure how those fees are programmed in our system, and it's going to take time. So our ICT department feels comfortable that we can accomplish that goal by the 1st of next year. This slide just goes over the different areas of the 157 that we were proposing changes in. You know, obviously, we'll ask for, you know, any input or questions that you have at the end of our presentation. So how did DILP, first off, come up with our target? One of the things we looked at historically over the years is, what is our ratio budget to revenue? And over on the left-hand side, I went back to FY16, and you can see, based upon our budget number, what our revenue bringing in, what that percentage cost is. So you can see that's been dramatically dropping from, in FY16, about 70%, and now, in FY24, we're right about 42% so far for this fiscal year. I expect that we're going to be right around 40%. I don't expect the next two months to be barn burners in our revenue, so that number will come down a little bit. So our revenue target is 90-95% of our total cost. What we also did was we started looking back in FY23, and our total costs really started to include staffing from planning and zoning that intakes those permits, staffing from ICT to program the system for us, ICT hardware and services associated with the EnerGov system, and then the additional licensing costs that we talked about before. So over and above that, on those numbers, that adds about another $500,000 on top of DILP's budget number. So that's what we were looking at, total cost to help recoup some of those with our fees. Again, we were looking at 90-95% as a target for the FY25 budget, and right now, our projected shortfall in FY25 is going to be about $2.6 million with this methodology. So that's the number we were trying to get from the DILP fees. So at this time, I'm honored to turn the presentation over for the next couple of slides to Mr. Bowling. Mr. Bowling has worked very diligently on this, on this part of it. We kind of teamed up. I took care of the revenue and the projections. Mr. Bowling's actually done the legwork and becomes my subject matter expert on actually the fees that DILP is proposing. So, Mr. Bowling?
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Is this one?
Yes, sir. Just pulling in a little close to you.
So our goal was to find a comparable fee schedule within these surrounding jurisdictions that we researched, and we found that Carroll County, which was very comparable, Harford County, had a simple fee schedule that we thought would work for us. So that's where we came up with our, the basis of what we were doing. We, our methodology that we established was so that it could be easily reviewed and evaluated in the future, since it's such a simple fee schedule. Our basic fee schedule is really applicable, as it is, to wood frame unpermitted construction types, one and two family dwellings, and business occupancy classifications. We also looked at creating adjustment factors for more complicated permits, where you have type, they're using protected type of construction, or certain occupancy classifications that are associated with higher risk factors. So we took that into consideration. We also evaluated our staff time associated with plan review and inspections due to these increased, the construction types and the risk factors on those type of permits. So basically, what we did was, we took three random months from calendar year 2023, and we decided to, we were going to look at our revenue as it came in, but then we were going to take the Carroll County revenue and apply that as our first step, to see where that would take us. So we actually evaluated 111 commercial permits and 492 residential permits from those three months. So the first time we did this, reevaluating those fees, we did not meet our budget goal. It actually took two more tries to get to that budget goal, which meant that we actually took 1,809 permits and basically repriced them in order to reach the information we're presenting to you today. And I will tell you that from the, from the time we started this until the bill was ready for introduction, took us 14 months. And we're also proud to say that we had no outside expenditures. This was all done within DILP. So everything you're seeing and hearing came from us, so.
Thank you. So the last slide I have tonight is our revenue projections. So I broke this out by sections of the county code, and again, we were trying to target in DILP about $2.6 million, and we think we're pretty close on that revenue estimate. Now, again, that's going to be associated with continued permits numbers being at the levels they are, licensing numbers being at the levels they are. So, you know, we think we're pretty close. I have with me our subject matter experts for Health Department, Department of Public Works, and also ICT, unfortunately, is not here. But those revenue projections from those departments, for Health Department, excuse me, was about $455,000, which I think, I believe, is reflected in the FY25 proposed budget that increased to the Health Department, Environmental Health. And also, Department of Public Works is about $365,000. The ICT cost comes in about $110,000 to re-tup those costs. So overall, we're looking at about a $3.5 million increase in revenue. So at this time, we're willing to take any questions that you have from this body.
Well, Mr. Truitt, Mr. Bowling, I want to thank you for the time and the effort that you put forward to review this, spend time in our office trying to explain to us, and basically work with us to get to where we need to be on these new fee structures. Wanted to say the same thing with Ms. Austin and Mr. Resline, as far as the Health Department's concerned, with their input there. So with that, Mr. Pennman?
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to thank you and your team, Mr. Truitt, Mr. Bowling, for putting this together. I know it's budget time, right, and we need to explore and have conversations about, you know, finding different revenue sources to combat the rise in inflation, right? And that's, you know, some of my concern, if we're looking at the total picture of what this could cause, and I just, you know, want to walk through that as far as inflation. Because the concern that I have is, you know, with these new expenses on these stakeholders that are pursuing these permits, it's going to get passed on to the consumer, right? And then, the cost of doing business goes up. So, and I think that it's a very complex issue, and I'm glad we're having the conversation. But have we had any discussions with those stakeholders, those businesses that are going to be affected by the increase on these permits?
We have not specifically reached out to the stakeholders. That was one of our guiding principles, that when I talked about not having adverse effects. We were looking at other jurisdictions and their fee structure that were already implemented and already successful. So we're not trying to be the highest and make, you know, the most money that we can. We're trying to live within our budget and what our expenditures are, and notice that there is a shortfall. You know, I respectfully understand where you're coming from, but I think one of the important factors that you have to remember is that while the individuals that are utilizing our services are the ones that are paying for our services, not, a majority of the citizens of Harford County are not utilizing general fund dollars to help balance that 42 or 60-some percent budget deficit. So, you know, I understand, you know, your concept, and we were conscious of that, but we do not feel that these fees are going to have an adverse effect that would drive business or, you know, development away from the county.
Yeah, and I understand that this is different than, you know, the trash tax or the 911 tax that was put on us, because this is specific to the permits. And I know you're trying to close that gap versus the cost of doing business and the costs on the actual consumer in this front. And I know, as a maturing county, you know, the ability to apply for permits on, you know, even new development is reducing, as well as the different roadblocks that have been put in place for, you know, different business in that industry. So with that gap that you're trying to fix, would, is that a consideration as far as the reduction of permits that have been applied for could have, you know, an influence on that as well?
Absolutely, and I think, you know, I mentioned that in my presentation. I think, you know, one of the telling factors here is the gold bar graph here shows our revenue that we generated since FY2016. The dashed red line is our average revenue. It's pretty stable. Even though we, when we had the economic downturn, this revenue was, while not reflected in the chart, was pretty stable. So I don't know that we're going to see a great reduction in the amount of permits. Obviously, we are seeing some, but it's, our demographics are changing from permit types. We're moving from new construction, and in the residential, you're about 9% of our residential permits are new construction, new one and two family dwellings, to more of additions, alterations, accessory structures. That's the bulk of our permits, and we see the same thing in commercial. So as we've talked about in the budget presentation, you know, as the county moves forward with trying to figure out how we're going to do redevelopment and some of the concepts and the strategies that we're going to have to look at, I think this all fits into that. So as our numbers are going to go down for a little while, I believe that once we re-look at that strategy, our numbers will start to either level off, maybe start to come back up again.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Can I kind of answer your question a little bit, too?
Yes, sure, absolutely.
So when we looked at the seven counties, or seven other jurisdictions, we were at the bottom with a couple of jurisdictions. Carroll County was in the middle, and there were three jurisdictions that were very high. So there was multiple reasons we chose Carroll County. One was that they were in the middle, which is where we want to be. Second is they're a very comparable county to us. They're almost the same square miles. Demographics are almost identical. They have towns in suburban area and in farmland, just like we do. So we modeled this after Carroll County on purpose, trying to get to the middle. We didn't want to overprice, but we couldn't no longer feel we could be underpriced. So it was a very conscious decision to use Carroll County for that reason.
And I appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Janzardan?
Thank you, Mr. Truitt, Mr. Bowling. God, I just want to say, Rich and, you know. So anyway, I know you guys put a lot of work into this. Certainly appreciate that. One of the questions I have is, I guess, 157-21, grading and erosion control permits.
I'm going to have to defer to my subject matter expert, Mr. Deputy Director Walsh.
So we've got a couple of issues right now. Well, actually, we have one real big, large issue with a grading that was done in Joppa Town in the muddy waters. And I know we're modeling our stuff after Carroll County, but Carroll County also doesn't have the Chesapeake Bay or the, you know, the waterways that we have, and the sediment runoff. And I see there's erosion permits, but I didn't see anything. Would you guys also control the bonding? Would that be you, or would that be somebody else?
That's us. That's our office. Correct.
Okay. So, perfect. So how do we look at something that affects the waterways as the same as it affects Jarrettsville or something else when somebody's clearing land and doing work on the land? If they do something, it's not as big as an impact of putting silt or mud into the water like it would be in Joppa Town? And what is the, what is the bond requirements on, is it based on, has that been upgraded to the bonds, or is it just the permits that have been changed?
Just the permits.
Okay. So where...
Different section of the code, and there's some...
When do we look at the bonds, or can we, do we have to?
We certainly can in a separate effort.
Okay. I think that's my biggest question, is that, you know, we want to look at the bonds, and do you do both bonds on land, sediment? Is it usually one bond, or is it multiple bonds?
Multiple bonds, grading and stormwater, separate bonds.
And how do we have it work now? What's the, what's the criterion, what's the fee for bonds? Based on, is it based on square footage, acreage?
Based on a square footed disturbance, and that number's actually in the code.
Okay.
Stormwater management is not specific in the code, so there's a calculation based on the plans that are ultimately approved, based on the cost of construction of those stormwater facilities, so that's how much they bond.
I might be sitting down and talking with you shortly. Thank you so much for your answer, and appreciate all you guys' hard work and effort. Thanks.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Janzardan, and Mr. Riley.
Yes, Rich, again, your team, I appreciate it, and I think this is well done, and been a long time in coming. I see it happened back in 2000. Do you have something in your policy where we don't have that big gap, and now we'll do it every three years, or every two years, or?
No, we do not. I can say, in past administrations, there was not a whole lot of appetite to bring this forward, you know, in my career. I know we looked at it under the Craig administration, and it pretty much died on the executive branch side. I think we looked at it one other time. But no, there is no requirement to, you know, recycle these, or look at the fees to see where we are at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Hello. I was going to ask along those same lines, is that something that we could legislate to guarantee that every five years it's reevaluated to help protect you all from having? I mean, the gap come FY24 and '23 is tremendous, and how much things cost and how much we were charging. Is that something that we could do to make, in protection of the work that you all do and the funding to make it happen, to set that it'll be reevaluated every so many years?
Absolutely. It wasn't part of our guiding principles that we initially had established. We had had some conversations about that. I think we had some conversations with Council President. We felt that this point, if this council had the appetite to do so, then they certainly can take a look, stab at that, and propose an amendment where, you know, trigger some type of review on a basis.
Or like, when it drops below this percentage, like, when there's this much of a gap, then we reevaluate, something along those lines?
We certainly could do that. I think if we were to do that, we would definitely want to strengthen our methodology and document a little bit better than where we are right now, so that we do have, we're comparing apples to apples, per se. But obviously, you know, it's something that we, you guys can definitely take a look at if you feel strongly enough. I can tell you, this was part of the transition team report for DILP, and this administration has had the desire to put this forward. We've actually, Mr. Bowling said, we've been working on this for about 14 months. And, you know, one of the things that we both went, sat with the county executive and director of administration, we asked, you know, about potentially looking at outside, and they said, no, we want to do this inside. We want to keep that cost, you know, without expenditure of the cost, as long as we can do it. So that was one of our guiding principles as well. We wanted to know that moving forward, whoever's sitting in our seats had some type of methodology to at least start from. So, yeah, this can be done. I think we would have to work with you a little bit stronger, a little bit more to I think we would have to work with you a little bit stronger, a little bit more to be able to strengthen that methodology and, and solidify it, but absolutely, if this council wants to do that, you know, that's certainly your prerogative.
And, and I can tell you that looking at the other jurisdictions, there are two jurisdictions that do have an automatic increase based on CPI, but, you know, the other five didn't, so we kind of didn't want to step into that and be, and, and we just want to make it simple and productive and not get into automatic rate increases which might drive us, you know, out of, out of being competitive basically.
Yeah, and I think we should probably set up a meeting. I'll have my legislative aide Heather reach out to you all just to talk more about that. You know, is it better to do it based on time or is it better to do it based on when it reaches this, you know, threshold as far as gap in, in how much it's covering? But I do think it would be good for us to address that so that, to Councilman Penman's point, it's not a big increase all at once, but, you know, we make those marginal adjustments every few years to keep us competitive in where we need to be to cover service.
And just to your point, I think right off the bat, I don't know that you want to look at the percentage of revenue, cost revenue to, or budget to cost revenue that's associated because there's too many variables and flexibility in permitting. We had a very, we, we had a permit that came in this year, the fee was the largest permit fee that I can remember, and we're probably not going to see those types of projects every year. So, those variables that come in, you know, we've had a lot of multifamily projects. We're not going to see multifamily as much in, in the coming future. You know, the, you know, the warehouses, the large warehouse buildings, they were, you know, they were a revenue source for us, you know, from a permitting standpoint. Those square footages are not going to be seen anymore. So, I think it's more so on a time per, you know, every certain incremental amount of time because you could get some false, false data back, basically looking at it on a percentage point.
That makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Salas, this reminds me of two thousand fourteen when we came in with water and sewer that had been so many years prior to being looked at that we had to make some difficult decisions. And I, I did take the opportunity to speak to many of our outside builders in reference to these fees. They all understand that it's a cost to doing business and that it hasn't been looked at for over twenty years, and it's something that we need to manage much closer so that we don't fall behind and we don't have to have large increases. So, I welcome further discussions to look at it so that we can get on track. Mr. Guthrie.
What was the one you said was the biggest one, biggest project, what was that?
Solar Farm.
Solar Farm? I want to talk about, a couple about these permits because we'd like to get some advice from you because there's been talk among several council members about increasing these fees in different areas to attach to amendments to my bill about the twenty acres that you're probably familiar with. I noticed that a grading permit set, states that a bond amount for the grading permit is based on the disturbed area on an approved engineering sediment control plan. Disturbed area is a square foot multiplied by four cents plus three hundred dollars, except for stockpiles which are calculated at two dollars per square yard. So, how, how would you explain that on a grid? How would you recommend that we would change something like that to enhance that, those fees?
I'm going to have to defer to Deputy Director Walsh.
So, I think it, it could be as simple as raising, raising that number.
Which one?
The, the-
If you say multiply, you say a disturbed area in square feet multiplied by four cents plus three hundred dollars.
The four cent-
Would you say eight cents multiplied by five hundred dollars? I mean, just as a example.
Sure, I mean, I think there, there could be some discussion and calculations on what that really means in terms of a bond cost.
We'd like to get into that and find out what the different amounts would, would raise, okay? Also, stormwater management permit, a bond amount for stormwater management permit is based on the construction cost of the facility. Explain that to us. How would you talk about what that would be and how does that figure?
So, there's a, there's a calculation done by the, the engineer for the project on how much those stormwater facilities would cost, and, and that's, that's the basis on the bond amount is that calculation that's verified by our folks as well.
That sounds very clear. Since the bond amount for stormwater management permit is based on the construction cost of the facility, so tax, take X facility and it's worth ten million dollars. So, give me an example of what we'd be talking about.
There's a, there's a construction cost for, for the stormwater facilities that we're talking about. So, if it's a pond, whatever cost to construct that pond, that's, that's the basis of the calculations, the construction cost of the facilities that are in question that are, that are bonded in case that developer goes defunct and the county needs to come in, call the bond, have that money and, and finish the construction, that's the purpose of it. So, those, those calculations are, are real based on current costs. The, the grading number is an old number and that's been in code for a long time, that has not been updated. So, the stormwater costs are current, so the bond amounts for the stormwater are current that we, we currently use.
You're not, you're not answering my question. I'm trying to get a number out of you, other words.
Mr. Guthrie, it sounds to me like he's not going to be able to give you an exact number this evening, but I think, I think if you take the time to schedule a meeting with Mr. Walsh outside of this in time for maybe an amendment to this bill if need be or if it's a separate piece of legislation, we can look at it then.
All right, I'd like you to come over and, and meet with the three of us at least and talk about that. The other, other one I want to talk about is a public works agreement. A bond amount for a public works agreement is based on the construction cost estimate determined by the engineering department. These two are so flexible, you know, that, that it's hard for the average citizen to understand this, including me, to understand this when you, when you're, when you don't have a, a solid number that you're working at, you know? I mean, I gave you an example, if it was ten million dollars, what would it be? But I guess we'll, we'll need to meet and you give me some, give us some ideas and some numbers that'll work with these different fees, okay?
Sure, and you're still talking about section two fourteen of the code, right? Your, your bill, not this bill.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Correct.
But in summary, I've, I've talked about making amendments to my bill on, on bonding issues to make the bonds much higher so we don't wind up with another hackley reserve, you know, spitting down our faces, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie.
Okay.
Anyone else on the desk? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. With no one signed up, we'll conclude this public hearing. Fellas, thank you very much, appreciate it. We're going to have to take a five-minute recess.
Good evening. Chair calls the legislative session day twenty-four dash zero sixteen. I would ask you to stand for the pledge followed by the open prayer by Councilmember Penman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today in prayer seeking your guidance and wisdom as we gather today to serve our community. We thank you for this privilege to serve and for the responsibility entrusted to us. Lord, we ask for your presence to be felt among us, guide our thoughts, words and deeds so that we may serve selflessly and with the integrity. Give us the wisdom and the courage to make decisions that honor you and that are just, fair and beneficial to all. May your strength be with us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations. We have none. Five, consideration petitions, applications, appointments and nominations. Executive appointment, Economic Development Agricultural Advisory Board. Mr. Janjordana.
Council President, I move to approve the appointments of Jennifer Wilson and Alicia Jeffries.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Been moved in second to approve the county executive's appointments to the agricultural advisory board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, these appointments are hereby approved. Special presentations, agenda number six. Council this evening, we're honored to have representation from BGE to give us a briefing on PJM approved Brandon Shore deactivation needs for the project. I want to welcome Ms. Bonnie Johansson, Alex, I can't remember your last name.
Zach Mitchell.
And also want to point out Christiana in the audience. I want to thank you for being here and whenever you're ready.
Good evening. As a Harford County resident and a professional, I have the opportunity to work in Harford County and grow up here, it's a privilege to present this project to you. My name is Zach Mitchell, I work for Baltimore Gas and Electric in our governmental and external affairs division. On the screen you'll see shortly, and I believe council, you'll have a presentation in front of you that highlights an upcoming large project that BGE is beginning to execute. This project is titled Good Energy at Work. Recently, as of last year, the Brandon Shores Power Plant in Anarundel County announced their intent to retire. They want to shut down a thirteen-hundred megawatt coal-fired electric generation facility in two thousand twenty-five. In order for that thirteen-hundred megawatt loss of power to go offline, BGE has a bundle of work that we have to complete in order to support that system or that plant coming offline.
I'm just going to wait for her to catch up.
Yeah, it's, it's security, wanted to not let her send a evil comment.
You want us to grab our laptop?
You want me to grab them or just speak to it?
Well, you've got the slide, right.
I do, but I don't know that that's-
Yeah, we can just keep going.
You guys have it.
Yes.
We'll proceed without the presentation of that, it's all right, folks?
So, again, thank you, it's good to see everybody again, and as Zach pointed out, Bonnie Johansson, I did retire from BGE about a year and a half ago, came back as a consultant on this project and enjoying, I actually hired him to take my spot, and so I get to work with him a little longer and, and we've been having a great time, so I really appreciate your time tonight, it's good to see you all. As Zach mentioned, we were here to talk about the, the closing of the Brandon Shores Power Plant down in Anarundel County. So, it's in the northern part of Anarundel County in Pasadena, been there a long time, owned by Talon Energy, which is a separate company, BGE doesn't have anything to do with that. And they notified PJM in the fall of last year that they were going to cease running and that original date was June of twenty-five. And so, PJM, you know, had a duty to look and see what reliability would be affected by that plant going offline. So, PJM is the, is the grid provider for the thirteen states, the largest one in the country, and they came up with alternatives for all the different companies, BG, Pepco as well as Pico as well.
So, as we said, the power plant wants to shut down in two thousand twenty-five. The bundle of work that we have to complete cannot be executed between now and two thousand twenty-five. We're working to complete this bundle of work by December of two thousand twenty-eight. What's really important here is Talon Energy just filed an RMR, which is a reliability must-run with FERC. FERC and Talon will negotiate a premium rate that the utilities that are impacted by the shutdown of the plant, we will have to pay, our customers, your constituents will have to pay to keep that power plant online until we can execute this large bundle of work. Council in front of you, you should have a series of small projects that when combined complete the bundle of work that BGE has to complete. I, I don't want to lose sight of the work that Pico and PHI have to complete, which are our sister utilities on both of our borders. There is work that those utilities have to complete on their side, but BGE does have the largest set of work inside the bundle. I'd like to get into that bundle of work and I'd like to start in our most northern extent of the project itself. You should see on slide five, an over, a really high-level map of this work. Folks, what we're seeing here is thirty-five, almost forty miles of work, whether it's new transmission we have to install or reconducting of existing transmission. When we start in our most northern territory, we have to bring in five hundred thousand volts of transmission between a, a location in Delta PA, Peach Bottom, to our most northern substation in Harford County, Greyston. From Greyston, we're going to move roughly thirty miles south through Harford County, through Baltimore County, and we're going to land at a location called Batavia Farm Road. At that location, we're going to have to build a brand-new station at this site.
So, I think what's important to understand about that is through Harford County, we're coming from, you know, through Norrisville, through Jarrettsville, down an existing right-of-way that BGE has owned and some of its easement, but most of that's when you get more towards the Baltimore County side since the nineteen thirties. So, one of the benefits of the route that PJM has, you know, dictated, and I use that word correctly, is that we have been, you know, told that we have to do this to support the plant shutting down. Because thirteen hundred megawatts of a power plant is a lot of generation to lose, and so Maryland becomes a very imported electrical state rather than producing itself inside and working its way out. So, when you come down the corridor, there is an existing pole line that's on there now, it's a two-thirty KV line that's existing today. It used to be lattice structures back in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, we redid that line, put up what, what looked like weathered steel poles that run through the county now all the way down, and that's the same corridor that we're going to come back and install a new pole line with another two-thirty double circuit on it. So, it'll look exactly like what's there now, it'll be two of them all the way down. So, it's going to bypass through, you know, Bagley, it's not touching Bagley, but it'll come from Greyston all the way down through Falston, you know, down past Bagley and work its way over to Raphael Road across ninety-five on the Baltimore County side.
If you're looking at slide eight, you'll see from Batavia Road to Riverside connected by a yellow line. That yellow line represents reconducting. The new transmission build will stop at the Batavia Farm location, but we have to upgrade or reconductor existing lines between those locations, and that moves from Baltimore County to Anarundel County. After we, we finish our work at Riverside, we still have one more substation that we have to build, and that's a solid road just outside of the Brandon Shores Power Plant. So, we're up to thirty-five miles of transmission work, two brand-new substations, but we also have to make upgrades to a series of other substations to accept that new power coming from a new location. I believe that should be slide nine, identifies two substations that we'll have to upgrade and install a new piece of equipment which is not on BGE's system called a statcom. The statcom is something that actually Exelon has not installed before, but we're going to install two here and as well another one at Pepco Holdings down in Montgomery County.
So, you know, listening to the discussion earlier about permitting, that's a huge component of this project, and the largest component is the CPCN through the state and the Public Service Commission, which is the certificate of public need and necessity. And we're in the process now of developing all of that document, and that's an extensive document that'll be submitted to the commission. The target is the end of June. So, once that is submitted, then the commission has a lot of back-and-forth power plant research program and the other agencies, CNR, MDE will come back and ask clarifying questions that could take months to go back and forth, and then the process itself can take anywhere from twelve to eighteen months to complete. So, none of the transmission work can start until that approval has been received. So, we're looking at, you know, at least probably into mid-twenty-five before any construction could start on the transmission corridor.
Next, I want to identify just the level of outreach that the utility is performing. We started notifying elected officials at the state level, at the local level last year. After we made those early notifications, we began meeting with community advisory boards, local community organizations, the farm bureau. We wanted to tell the story that the power plant is shutting down and PJM provided a directive of how we can respond to mitigate the loss of that power. After we engaged the communities, we had to perform a lot of active listening, right? You're going to hear a lot in the media that tells a story of what people are concerned about, and the utility wanted to be out front to hear that story, whether it's a helicopter, whether it's land use, whether it's timing so we don't impact the crops of Harford County. It was important for us to hear- It was important for us to hear that story, and that's why we were out so early. Typically, we wouldn't be out until we had a 30% design that identifies where the towers are going to go, where is the line, you know, how much line are we going to install? What do the substations look like? But we wanted to get out early to hear that feedback from the council, elected officials, and the community members, and that's why we're here today. Our outreach is not going to stop now. We want to ensure that we are built and our communication is sustainable, and you're hearing the story from us. You know what details you need to hear, the constituents want to hear, so we're aligned with the knowledge and information that needs to be shared from your side and my side as well.
Yeah, so what you're going to see, we're hoping to go live this week with a website. It's just about finished, but it's going to be very high-level. It's going to be really what you're seeing now, a little more broken up in detail. But once we get to 30%, which should be, you know, in the next, you know, two, couple months or so, then we will take that information because it'll be very technical and engineering when we get it. And then we're going to digest it and put it in a format that actually the public can understand so that we can communicate. So the goal will be in September, we're scheduling now these large open houses where we will be able to sit down with neighbors one-on-one. They can, we'll be able to pull up their address, they'll see what their view shed is today, and then they'll see what their view shed's going to be with the new design. And that's really what matters to people. People want to know, you know, right now, nobody knows exactly what it's going to look like. We just have a rough idea what it's going to look like, right? But we don't know exact locations. And so, you know, listening to people early, although it's frustrating because we only know what we know, it still gave us some insight. And the example I used, it doesn't affect Hartford County, but in Baltimore County, there's a segment just south of where the Raphael Road Substation is, up there in that upper area there in Kingsville, where we go from those weathered steel poles to galvanized so they look more like gray poles. And one of the customers said to us, you know, you're not going to change the color of the poles. So then we have a weathered steel pole and a gray pole, and engineering was like, we kind of forgot about it, right? So those little nuances that, you know, when you're an engineer working on such a large project, you forget those little things. So those kind of things have been very helpful, and we're really going to focus at the open house to have people understand something that I think we take for granted, that people understand what it means to live next to a right-of-way, you know, and what, you know, restrictions there really are, you know, when you live next to one or you have an easement or we own property, to really help re-educate people about what that means. And we saw that where we've identified a few encroachments that have come up over the years on the right-of-way. And whether we can work around them, you know, that might be easy, but some others might be a little more challenging. So really to remind people and educate them about what, you know, they should or shouldn't be doing on the right-of-way, or just asking, you know, BGE getting some kind of lease agreement for a fence, for example, just something simple like that that we're working through now. So we're going to have an open house at North Hartford, and then we're going to do one in the Fallston area, you know, either at the high school, it's probably where we're going to go with the middle school. And then we'll have one in northern Baltimore County in Perry Hall area, and then one more in the Rosedale area, and then one in the Anarundel County area. So there'll be five altogether, and we're going to do those back-to-back in September. So as soon as we clarify the date, I'll make sure that everybody gets awareness of what that is.
Thanks, Bonnie. In speaking to feedback and influence and performing this outreach, this last slide here before we get to the detailed maps identifies over 8,400 properties within a quarter mile of this 35-mile route, right? We understand that we will be working in various communities that are quite diverse, from Peach Bottom to Rosedale and down south. So it's important that we're out early, we're out telling the story and getting the feedback. So we appreciate you giving us the opportunity today to tell the story, even though we're early, don't have much detail to share. We appreciate the time to identify this project with you and hear your feedback and concerns. So thank you.
Does anybody know where the line we're talking about that runs through Fallston and up through Norrisville? Because we have the maps, they're not, you know, way zoomed in, but it gives you a sense of where they come through. And we have been at the advisory boards, and we've seen Councilman Riley, so thank you for attending those meetings. And, you know, we're happy to meet with other groups, or if you have any, you know, other suggestions, we're very open to making sure we get out and talk to the right people.
So, I mean, it seems to me that, you know, after experiencing Transsource and everything that went with that, I'm really glad to see that you're out in front of this and doing such a great job to reach out to the communities and property owners. And speaking with some of the groups that were very active back then and still today, they are commenting on the job that you guys are doing today, how much more efficient you are, how much more able to listen, and I think satisfy some of their concerns. So I'm really glad to hear that so far, but obviously waiting to hear what the end result is. Because I remember, like I said, being involved with the Transsource part and having to go up and testify, there were a lot of concerned citizens there. So with that, I'm going to open it up to any comments. Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to echo that. I mean, your team has done a great job being as transparent as possible. I mean, myself and legislative aide sat down last year to truly, really try to understand this. And as we go forward, as you know, and that's why, you know, you hold these meetings in the future, I don't know what I don't know. This is all new project, you know, so the impact on my district and the other districts that are affected by this will have more questions along the way. And I tell you, since this thing's been on the agenda, I've gotten a couple. And I don't, one of them is kind of an easement issue, as you mentioned before, where it's negatively affecting constituents' stormwater infiltration system. So I'll touch base on that and just maybe kind of have you look at it and see, you know, if there's issues there or can it be resolved. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot more going forward once, you know, you meet with the community. So I welcome and continue that conversation as well. I just did have one question that did pop in my head, though, is the plant that's closing, do we know why it's closing?
I think the media suggests a lot, but I personally don't know. It's owned by Talon Energy Equity Company out of Houston, Texas. Their decisions, their negotiations or conversations aren't, I'm not in that room, I don't think anybody we work with is, so I can't answer that one, sir.
It is a coal-fired plant, just so you're aware.
Okay.
I think last year, there were three coal-fired plants that announced their retirement, and that would, that would remove all coal-fired generation from the state of Maryland.
Yeah, one thing to reinforce, and I think we said it, but it reminds me to say it again. So one of the efficiencies that we're looking for, you know, just not with the state permitting, but at the local level as well, is because if the plan is negotiating, as Zach mentioned with FERC, that reliability must run impact. And that means that they're going to come up with a price that everybody in the service territory is going to have an added on to their bill while they have to run until the infrastructure's in place that that plant can shut down. So the longer they have to run, the longer everyone's going to have that additional charge on their bill. As soon as the plant's able to come offline, that charge will come off the bill. And we don't know what that is yet. It's going to be public very soon. It's not something that BGE is involved in. But that is an incentive to be efficient, right? And we're looking at, you know, pre-ordering long lead items, trying to make the permitting process efficient so that we can get the work done in a timely way to offset those charges.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jandredano?
Sir. So thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate the presentation. So we're losing, that's the last coal-fired plant that's closing. I guess, what coal-fired plants did you guys actually own in Maryland that you closed? Was the Baltimore County one?
I mean, back in the day, Crane Power Plant.
What did you guys own that you guys closed down? Number one.
We didn't close, I'm trying to think. We sold that, we divested all of that.
You divested.
When Exelon came in, we split some of our load. And then with the recent separation between Constellation and Exelon, they took generation. The utility does not have any, we're all distribution now.
Yeah.
The last three remaining were HA Wagner and Brandon Shores, which were in Anarundel County. There was one in Frederick, but I just can't recall the name, that was not in any portfolio that Exelon ever had.
Okay. So we're losing coal-fired, what are we replacing it with other than Peach Bottom? And maybe that's what I'm missing.
No new generation is in conversation. PJM has directed that we bring in distribution level or transmission grid energy from Pennsylvania into the state, which changes our import ratio.
So where are we going to import all of our power from? Is it all from Peach Bottom, or is it from their grid up there, their other, their other power generating plants?
That's correct. It's coming from Pennsylvania, the first substation outside of Peach Bottom Power Plant.
Do we, is there enough capacity for that to, so if there's ever a problem at Peach Bottom, we're going to lose all of our power? Or the grid, I guess, but it'll pick it up from somewhere else in Pennsylvania?
That's correct.
We don't get anything cross from Jersey or anywhere else? It's all Pennsylvania?
No.
So PJM is a transmission operator that has 13 states, including DC. It's all connected and how the energy flows from plant to plant. We aren't connected to one source. When we're in that grid of other utilities, we get generation from other spaces as well.
And is it, nobody wants to build a natural gas generating electrician plant, electrical plant? Is it, is that not on the table, or is it the cost, or is it because of everybody and their brother thinks we're going to go green energy and that's going to solve all our problems?
BGE is a distribution company. We do not have any generation in our portfolio, so I just can't answer that one.
Now I know why you hired him, buddy. You good?
No, bye.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll be seeing more of you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, Pat?
Yes, sir?
I noticed any questions?
I noticed. Thank you, sir. Agenda number seven, approval of minutes. Fiscal year '25 budget, public hearing, May 8, 2024. Fiscal year '25 budget hearing, May 13, 2024. Legislative Day 24-015, May 14, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. We have none. Introduction of bills. Mr. Jandredano, please read Bills 24-018. 24-024, enter the record, please.
Bill 24-0118, liquor stores in B1 Neighborhood Business District as introduced, introduced by Councilmember Penman, an act to re-appeal and reenact with amendments to permitted use classification retail trade of Articles 7 District Regulations of Part 1 Standard of Chapter 267 zoning of the Harford County Code as amended to allow liquor stores as a permitted use in B1 Neighborhood Business District and all generally relating to permitted uses and zoning. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 6:00 PM in East Council Chambers. Bill 24-019, Fashion Way Name Changed as Introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive, an appeal to reenact, an act to re-appeal and reenact with amendments. 225-10, Road Names of Chapter 225, Street Sidewalks and Public Works of Article 3 General Regulations of Part 2 General Legislation of Harford County Code as amended to change the name of Fashion Way to Winters Run Road and generally relating to road names. Public hearing scheduled for June 11, 2024, at 6:00 PM in East Council Chambers. Bill 24-20, Economic Development Opportunity Loan Fund as Introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive, an act to re-appeal and reenact with amendments to Section 9-188.2F Economic Development Opportunity Loan Fund, Article 31 Office of Economic Development of Part 4 Administrative Offices and Agenda of Chapter 9 Boards of, Boards, Commissions, Councils, and Agencies of the Harford County Code as amended to increase the dollar value of the loan requiring resolution by the county council. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 6:00 PM in East Chambers. Bill 24-021, Revised Prior Year Bond Bills as Introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive, an act to revise prior bond legislation due to reduce cost for some of the capital projects to re-appeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 1 of Bill 19-13 as amended to re-appeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 3 of Bill 21-008 as amended to re, to re, to re-appeal and reenact with amendments, to repeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 7 of Bill 21-008 as amended to repeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 1 of Bill 21-010 as amended to repeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 3 of Bill 23-20 as amended, as amended to repeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 4 of Bill 23-020 as amended to re-appeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 5 of Bill 23-20 as amended to re-appeal, to repeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section Bill of...
Section 6.
Section 6 of Bill Number 23-20 as amended to re, to repeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 9 of Bill 23-20 as amended and to re, and to repeal and reenact with amendments certain portions of Section 1 of Bill Number 23-021 as amended. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 6:00 PM in East Council Chambers. You good? Yep. Bill 24-22, Bond Authorization CPI is Introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive, a bill to authorize and empower Hartford County, Maryland to borrow on its full faith and credit and issue and sell its bonds or other evidence of indebtedness, including lease financing, in an amount not to exceed $85,030,000 principal amount, the proceeds thereof to be used for the expansion, reconstruction, rehabilitation, renovation, and improvement of certain projects as described in the annual budget and appropriation ordinance, Bill Number 24-14 as amended for the year ending June 30 of 2025, and as described in this bill in accordance with Section 524 of the Charter of Hartford County and Section 123-40 of Code of Hartford County, or as otherwise permitted by law, authorizing the county council of Hartford County, Maryland, the county council, to adopt an administrative resolution that shall provide for, provide for the form of instrument by which any indebtedness is to be evidenced, the manner by which bonds and other indebtedness may be insecure, and the rate, rates of interest to be paid, and generally for such other matters as may deemed appropriate by the county council in connection therewith, and authorizing the county council by administrative resolution or the county executive of Hartford County, Maryland, the county executive by executive order to determine the form of various documents as are necessary or desirable to implement the financing authorized herein, the manner of issuance and delivery of any bonds or any other evidence of indebtedness, the payment of all necessary expenses in connection therewith, the method by which bonds or any other evidence of indebtedness shall be sold, maturity schedule and redemption provisions, authorizing the appointment of certain agents and otherwise generally, generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery, and payment of bonds or any other evidence of indebtedness, providing that the bonds or any other indebtedness shall be issued upon the faith, full faith and credit and taxing power of Hartford County, Maryland, providing for the issuance of bond anticipation notes or other forms of indebtedness upon adoption of an administrative resolution by the county council approving the interest rate or rates to be borne thereby for all or a portion of the project described herein for which the proceeds of sale of the bond anticipation notes shall be used, providing that after the issuance of bond anticipation notes or any other form of indebtedness or any other renewal thereof, the county council shall authorize the issuance of bonds to pay said bond application notes or other forms of indebtedness, providing that upon written recommendation of the county executive and administrative resolution of the county council or all or portion of the indebtedness authorized herein intended to be utilized for programs or projects for managing, producing, treating, recapturing, abating, or controlling non-point sources of water pollution, including stormwater, subsurface drainage water included among the projects described in Section 1 of this bill, may be incurred pursuant to the loans from the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration, providing this disbursement of the proceeds of the sale of the bonds or other indebtedness authorized herein and for the levering of charges, assessments, and all taxes necessary to provide payment of the principal of any premium, if any, and interest on the bonds or any other form of indebtedness, providing that certain additional matters may be determined by resolution of the county council or may be reserved unto the county executive as prescribed by such resolution, providing the method of fixing the interest rates to be borne by such bonds and generally providing for and determining the various matters in connection therewith and generally relating to funding of the products described herein. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, June 11, 2024, 6:00 PM in East Council Chambers. Bill 24-23, Zoning Wall Signs as Introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti, an act to re-appeal, reenact with amendments subsection B3, wall signs of Section 267-33, signs of Article 5 supplementary... signs of Article 5 supplementary regulations, Part 1 Standards of Chapter 267 zoning of the Harford County Code as amended to permit electric boards as wall signs in certain zoning districts to restrict the size of electronic message boards as wall signs and generally relating to zoning. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 6:00 PM in East Council Chambers. I'm going to take a drink.
Go ahead. One more. Always take a drink. Have a drink.
Bill 24-024, livability code as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive, an act to reappeal and reenact with amendments Section 162-2, 162-4, 162-5, 162-6, 162-8, 162-9, 162-14, 14 and Sections 162-15 of Chapter 162 Livability Code of Part 2 General Legislation of Harford County Code as amended by revising the definitions of code official and department to provide that the Department of Inspections, licenses and permits shall enforce the provisions of Chapter 162 Livability Code as well as adopt any rules and regulations relating thereto by limiting in subsection 162-4, -4E references to the Annotated Code of Maryland, which have been repealed by removing the term designee throughout Section 162-5 as such term is superflicious considering the revised definition of code official by retitling Section 162-5A Designations to Enforcement by revising the provisions set forth in subsection 162-51 relating to the adoption of rules and regulations by reversing the provision set forth in section 162-6E relating to certain, relating to the creation of, of a lien on certain real property in certain circumstances by providing for civil and criminal penalties in accordance with Section 1-23, general penalty of Article 2 miscellaneous of Chapter 1, general provisions of the Harford County Code as amended for violation of this chapter by revising the provisions relating to the appeals of decisions made by the code official in certain circumstances by correcting the subsections 162-14E, comma 2, comma B and 162-15F references to repealed sections of the Annotated Code of Maryland by correcting an sparring error in subsection 162-15A and generally, generally relating to the livability code. Public, public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 6:00 PM in East Council Chambers. And I'm dizzy.
Thank you. Agenda number 10, introduction and consideration of amendments, amendments 1 through 7 to Bill 24-015 Pay and Classification Plan. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve amendments 1 through 7 to Bill 24-15.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve amendments 1 through 7 to 24-015. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, amendments to Bill 24-015 are hereby approved. Mr. Janjordano, please read memorandum of change 1 through 3 for Resolution 01224, Fiscal Year 25 Capital Improvement Plan into the record, please.
Resolution 012-24 Capital Program Fiscal Years 2025 to 2030 Memorandum of Change Number 1. This memorandum of change will move fiscal year 2027 future bond funding in the amount of 4,500,000 fiscal year 2026 for a total of 9 million and future bond funding for fiscal year 2026 for Jop Town Community Center. Memorandum of Change Number 2. This memorandum of change will revise the project description to read as follows. This project is for the design and construction associated with a public safety complex. Construction will occur in multiple phases to include fire, EMS and law enforcement. Memorandum of Change Number 3. This memorandum of change will revise the project description to include for fiscal year 25, this project includes the funding necessary to purchase the vehicle height monitoring software for Perryman.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Agenda number 11, call for final reading of bills. Bill 24-009, zoning cannabis dispensary as amended. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 24-009 as amended.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to move. Bill 24-009 as amended. Is there any discussion? Mr. Janjordano.
I can't vote for this bill. I know I made an amendment to make it from 500 feet to 1,000 feet, but I think talking with Council Member Pennman, we realize that this, this whole bill is illegal anyway and I cannot vote for a cannabis dispensary. So I'm going to be a no.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Councilman Janjordano and I really just don't understand the purpose of this legislation. I understand the intent. If it were up to me and a lot of members on this council, we'd make marijuana legal in Harford County. But the state has enacted laws that don't give us that authority. So now here is some legislation to limit where cannabis dispensaries can be located. And on the surface, if we have to have it, I would like to limit it, but it doesn't fall suit with the requirements of the state legislation. And I'll kind of read what the state legislation is, which was passed this year and approved by the governor in April. So in the legislation, which is House Bill 805, it says, "A political subdivision may not adopt any ordinance establishing zoning requirements for licensed dispensaries that are more restrictive than zoning requirements for retail dealer license under this article." Now, what is a retail dealer? If you look at the front of it, it defines it. The retail dealer means a person that sells an alcoholic beverage to any person other than the license holder. So this law says any place that allows alcohol would then allow marijuana dispensaries. So this, I don't know why this legislation was introduced. It doesn't, it violates the laws. And while I don't agree with the law, I did swear an oath to uphold the laws thereof. So with that, I, I don't believe in cannabis dispensaries. I don't believe in breaking the law, so I can't vote for this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Guthrie.
I, you know, I echo the same. The state sends stuff down here and, and comes up with a law and then sends it to us. And what are we supposed to be? Just some, some kind of a rubber stamp or something that, you know, that, that bothers me a lot. And the kick around, how many feet we're going to be from a school is ridiculous. And I don't support anything to do with marijuana or whatever you want to call this. So my vote's going to be no.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett.
Could you, Councilman Pennman, speak more to the ways specifically you see how this legislation is going to make our restrictions on cannabis sales more restrictive than what is required for alcohol sales? Just, I think that would be good to share publicly.
Sure. In this bill, it would restrict cannabis sales to zoning classifications B3 and CI. So currently, alcohol sales were permitted in village business, B2, B3 and CI. So that's currently what we have on the books.
So would that be the only change that would be needed to make it in compliance as you see it?
It would, yes.
But tonight's the drop dead dates. There's no time to fix them.
Yes.
Are we allowed to ask Larry if that's something that the administration was aware of? If it's like a clerical mistake or anything along those lines?
I think you just asked him. I, if I may, Larry, before you speak, if, if I understood it correctly, I think the county was trying to preempt anything that may have happened in Annapolis so that we could kind of control where these dispensaries may go if it was approved. And I think that the state has gotten well ahead of us. They passed House Bill, whatever the number is. 805. 805, signed by the governor, becomes law June 1st. So if we were to pass this legislation tonight, it would take 60 days after the county executive signed it to become law. By then, the state will override us anyway. So it's a mute point.
Is that?
I think, as I mentioned at the last, our last hearing when we had this, that becomes the question, is that as worded, by and large, indications where the state can see, unless it says may, state had, the state can basically supersede a county law or ordinance. If a state law says shall, for the directive of shall, it's a big difference than if it says may.
Anything else? Anything else, Mr. Bennett? Thank you, Mr. Guthrie.
But it doesn't say will.
That's a decision for the council.
Do you have any court cases that have been owing those two words?
As I said, that's a decision the council will.
You got it. I know. Understand.
Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
No.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
Mr. Pennman.
No.
Mr. Janjordano.
No.
Mr. Riley.
No.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
No.
Mr. Bennett.
No.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, Bill 24-009.
The opposite.
The opposite.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That would be a mess, wouldn't it? With zero notes or votes in the affirmative and seven votes in the negative, Bill 24-009 is hereby denied. Thanks for catching it. Agenda number 12, enrollment of bills. If we have none, 13 unfinished business, we have none, 14 new business, Harford Community College Inter Category Operating Budget Transfer, Fiscal Year 24. May I have a motion, please?
Council President.
Oh. Yes, yes. No, no, I'm sorry. Please, please.
Good evening and thank you. Karina Jackson on behalf of the college. It's been a while since we've been up in front of you for an ask like this, probably pre-COVID. And what we're here to ask you for, do, the Maryland Annotated Code requires that the college obtain permission from the county government when we'd like to move some expenditure budget between program codes. Program codes are our functions and where we decide where we're going to spend our money within our operating budget. So due to some vacancies and travel realization of savings and some projects that have not materialized over the past year, we've identified about 1.8 million dollars that we'd like to just realign and spend in other ways. Some of the redirected funding, we'd like to move to include establishing furnitures and fixtures for the Watered Edge Training Center in Belcamp. We'd like to refresh the college library to enhance student experience. That building needs some love. We need to meet the college portion of the dual enrollment expenditures that we've incurred this year. We need to replenish some of our scholarship funds and we need to address some of our deferred maintenance projects. We thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Counsel, Mr. Pennman.
I thank you for appearing before us. I know these are, you know, fiscally difficult times for everyone, so I applaud you and the college for finding different innovative ways to kind of reallocate funds and following the appropriation laws, guidelines as you should. So thank you.
Mr. Bennett.
My only question is about the dual enrollment costs. I mean, dual enrollment is going to keep existing in the next fiscal year. Is that cost built into the FY '25 budget that we were presented a few weeks ago?
We have increased the cost based on what we saw this year, but they're also making some steps to kind of limit the number of classes. So we're hoping those two will bring the, the number in right where we projected.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Jackson, I want to continue to express my appreciation to Dr. Felder, Dr. Hill, Harford Community College and the entire team for putting forth their efforts in these training facilities to help other people get, you know, much needed education and jobs. So we appreciate it very much. Mr. Janjordano.
How many scholarships do you guys administer?
Hundreds.
Hundreds?
Yes.
Okay. No, no exact, how many, how many outside people scholarships do you administer?
Again, it's in the hundreds. So if there's an outside organization that wants to donate that would flow through the foundation and then be administered to students. We do have a couple internal scholarships that we fund from operations. But again, it just varies on the year and the need and the number of applicants.
Thank you.
Anyone else? May I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve the inter category operating budget transfer fiscal year 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded to approve the transfers. We already had some discussion. Is there any other? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, the budget transfer for fiscal year 24 is hereby approved. Thank you. Thank you. A council, in your packet, you'll see a request for a letter of acknowledgement or support from the Women's Army Corps Veterans Association, asking us to provide a welcome letter for their packet. Their national convention is in Maryland this year and I thought it was something that we should consider. So it's up for your consideration this evening. So if I may, I'd like to have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the council letter of support.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved and seconded to support the letter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, council letter of support is hereby approved. Agenda number 17, comments and input from attending citizens. Do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you. Then 16 business from council members. Mr. Guthrie.
What was that?
That was funny.
Mr. President, due to certain people have to get going, I will pass tonight.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Mr. Pennman.
I feel like I should pass on that, but I'll be very, very brief. Still meeting with stakeholders in the county concerning the budget. I'm nearly done with the budget summary. Hoping to have that out later on this week. And I would just like to thank Harford TV. They're in here every single week, doing an exceptional job, professional job. So thank you for being here. I know you guys don't get recognized enough, but I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Janjordano.
Thank you, Council President. Happy birthday, Council President. Should I say how old and should we start singing happy birthday?
He's not 70, is he?
I don't know.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. But I'm going to bury you. I'm going to, I'm not going to start singing happy birthday, so.
Thank you. Thank goodness.
Yeah, no, no. I gave you some Sphiodals. What more could you ask for? So I just want to, had the opportunity to, grand opening of Anchor Mechanical. They, they moved to Robin Circle. They bought a building up there that was built probably 20 years ago. They've got 170 employees. So I'm, I'm happy to death that they stayed in Harford County, that they expanded their location. And I know they're going to do some expansion up there. So congratulations to Mark Huntley, Gabe Fettie and the whole, and Mark's wife, Kim and the whole staff up there on their grand opening. And then Bella's Annual Memorial Day Ceremony at Shamrock Park is Monday, May 27. And the ceremony will begin at 11:00 AM. And the Bella Annual Town Run is scheduled for Sunday, June 2. You can register for either the 5K run or the
You can register for either the 5K run or the 1-mile fun run. So thank you, Council President, and again, happy 70th birthday.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Riley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the Bellar Moose family there in Hickory for sponsoring the Public Safety Recognition Night. I appreciate my other colleagues coming out and congratulating all the recipients. We had a rock star, Amber Schroes, who did the Harford County Taste of Harfords. She did a phenomenal job. Kudos to Mrs. Schroes. And then I want to thank the Jarrettsville Lions Club, inviting me and the president to their 75th anniversary upon view.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
And happy birthday.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sodles.
Thank you, Council President. I will keep it short and sweet as well. I did have the privilege to attend the Patriot Program Assembly at Fountain Green Elementary today, which was very nice, and I plan to attend some of the upcoming high school graduations, and happy birthday. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Bennett.
Hello, good evening. I wish I had gotten a 70th anniversary Orioles jersey that they were giving away last week, would have been good for Pat, because their anniversary lines up with yours, so it's nice to be as old as the sports team.
Hey, 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 hey.
Hey, I'm almost as old as the Baltimore Ravens, so that, you know, that's kind of the same thing.
Older than both of them.
I got to attend the Harford Academy graduation along with Ms. Harris from Council President Vincenti's office, which was great, wonderful, wonderful ceremony. I also attended the Right to Read Event at Harford Community College. I was a guest speaker at that, talking about reading instruction across the country. And then, you know, continuing to meet with constituents and community groups, talk about the budget. Very thankful to see the note added to the budget about height monitoring systems, as that was a big concern of mine, so very thankful for the executive and his staff for addressing that. That's everything I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Obviously, the Patriot Programs are ongoing, and I had the opportunity and honor to attend Fountain Green for the earlier one today. Always a pleasure to go and congratulate our new Patriots and express our appreciation to the parents, the teachers, family, and friends for all their help to move them along. Graduations will be starting here soon, so we're looking forward to that. I want to advertise the Adequate Public Facilities Advisory Board meeting one last time, Wednesday, June 5, 6:00 PM, second floor conference room here in the council building. I also want to express my deepest condolences to the Gaylor and Brewer families due to the unfortunate passing of Mr. Brewer. I ask you to please keep them and their family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.